Hello.
Good evening, Nick. Hello.
Good evening, Jim.
Just testing. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Testing. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. You're good. We've got about another minute before we begin. Looks like we have just about everybody in the meeting. There's nobody in the waiting room. So I'm going to go ahead and call this October 27 city council meeting to order. I do have 7:31 on the clock. And with that, I would like to start by having everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now at this time, if the council can unmute their microphones, so the clerk can call roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Budmats.
Is it?
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessassi.
Here.
Diestis.
Present.
Sunaika.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience who are joining us on this virtual meeting are reminded that the proceedings are being recorded and they'll be used for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Public comments, as you know, will be afforded to members of the public who are joining us on this conference line as long as they've provided their contact credentials prior to the start of this meeting and prior to the deadline, which is an hour posted on this agenda. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers that are listening to the meeting, you'll also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures that are applicable to public comments at an in-person meeting of the city council. Namely, members of the public must have signed in prior to 7:30. And of course, any written comments that were submitted will be read aloud as well. As we move on in this evening's agenda, the first order of business that we're going to have here is going to be to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, and that's from October 13, 2020 city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Cannon for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yeah.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the minutes are approved. Well, since there is no reason to deviate from this evening's agenda, we'll continue on with the next spot, which is the mayor's report. And I have a couple of quick things I'd like to mention. Primarily, the first unfortunate reminder is that all indoor bar and restaurant services will be suspended in suburban Cook County as more of these COVID-19 mitigation measures take effect. These measures are scheduled to take effect on Wednesday at 12:01 a.m. There are specific details that relate to the bars, the restaurants, and venues that cater to meetings and social events that will be incorporated into these meeting minutes as well as being able to be found on our city's COVID-19 page on our city's website. If you're interested to understand more about what these mitigation measures are, you can find it on our COVID-19 page as mentioned. Additionally, with COVID-19 and Halloween being right around the corner, I just want to remind anyone who may be participating in trick-or-treating or having their kids participate in trick-or-treating, just to exercise discretion, good hygiene, and follow all applicable social distancing measures. Lastly, next Tuesday is November 3, election day. And even though we're in the midst of a pandemic, I still want to encourage everyone who hasn't either voted early or voted by mail to get out and make your voice matter. I'm promoting a nonpartisan request, just reminding all registered voters to participate in electing candidates for all the local, state, and federal seats that are up for reelection. If voting in person, just please be safe, be mindful of those around you, and continue with the best health measures moving forward. With that, are there any ward reports this evening? Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, unfortunately, I've made an error. I found out after the meeting that the Dunkin' Donuts on Kirchhoff is in fact open. I was informed by a neighbor that it was closed, but it really wasn't closed. I guess it was just closed for a couple of days for cleaning. So my apologies go out to them. I would encourage anybody that wants to buy donuts. Their drive-in will be open, even though their indoors will be closed. But again, I just wanted to make an apology for that statement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. I received quite a few phone calls, actually, after after you made that remark. And to be clear for the Great American Bagel, the owners had planned on selling for a long time their retirement age. They just couldn't find anybody to buy into the franchise. So nothing to do with poor business, et cetera. They are retiring age. And then Taco Bell, as you know, there's been issues longstanding with them and their business there. But thank you for sharing that. Are there any other ward reports? Okay. If not, then we can go ahead and move on to the next section where we will open the floor up to the public for 20 minutes. I do have one signature on the sign-in sheet. And in order to secure the rights of citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and guarantee the elected officials in order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, nobody shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disrupt orderly proceedings of this city council meeting. Per the rules and procedures, the public is to address the city council. And the fact that no member of the council responds doesn't mean that the city or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comments. I just ask that commentary be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect. And of course, profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. With that, the first name I have on the sign-in sheet is Laura Luisci. Laura, if you're on, floor is yours. If you're on with the computer, just unmute.
Thank you very much. My name is Laura Luisci. I am the COO of Cultivate Change LLC, and we do have a zoning matter up today. My business partner Tiffany Fordice, who's the CEO, is also on the line. Just wanted to introduce us and tell you that we're available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you again.
Wonderful. Thank you. So that now concludes the portion of the meeting that's open to the public for 20 minutes. And this brings us on to items that are pending. We have two items that are pending. The first one is ordinance number 20-44. That's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion by show of hand to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Bessassi, and thank you, Alderman Diestis, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to line item B, ordinance number 20-45. That's to approve a property tax levy abatement. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Sunaika, and thank you, Alderman Cannon, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and none opposed. So this ordinance is adopted. Let me toggle between both monitors here and bring the agendas up to speed. For the next items on the agenda, which are the consent ordinances in for first reading, this consists of five items, and that's items C through G. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda ordinances? Well, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Diestis, for the first, and thank you, Alderman Cannon, for the second. Beginning with line item C, which is ordinance number 20-00. That's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item D, ordinance number 20-00, at this time, approve comprehensive zoning code update. Line item E, ordinance number 20-00, is to approve tax levy for the city of Rolling Meadows. Line item F, ordinance number 20-00, at this time is to approve a tax levy for the Rolling Meadows Library. The next one, which is line item G, ordinance number 20-00, is to authorize a text amendment to section 122-28I2 to increase the number of adult-use cannabis business establishments from 1 to 2. And to approve the following related to 3650 Birdnik Street: A, to dissolve all previous planned development approvals; B, preliminary plan of subdivision approval for the final plan of subdivision for 3650 Birdnik Street subdivision; and C, a special use for an adult-use cannabis craft grower processing infusing establishment; and D, preliminary and final planned development approval. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward to second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us down to new business, and the business is to approve the payment of bills on warrant for October 27, 2020. Is there, by show of hand, a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call roll?
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Moving us on here to the consent resolutions. This consists of six items, and it's items I through N. Does any alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for resolutions by show of hand? This is very nice. Thank you all, council members. Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the six resolutions in one motion without debate. Can I get that motion? Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Thank you for the second, Alderman Diestis. First one, resolution number, letter I, number 20-r-103, approve the retainment of closed session minutes and recordings. Line item J, resolution number 2020-r-104, authorize the submittal of a grant application for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, ITEP, for the Hicks Road Euclid Avenue Bike Path. Line item K, which is resolution number 20-r-105, authorize the annual leak detection survey of the city's water system. Line item L, resolution number 20-r-106, is to authorize the replacement of Public Works' Phase 1 protective floor covering in the vehicle service area. Next is line item M, resolution number 20-r-107, is to award a contract for road salt alternative de-icing materials for the winter of 2020 and 2021. Next is line item N, resolution number 20-r-108, and that's to authorize the purchase of snow ice control road salt for the winter of 20 and 2021. The question is, shall the six resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This now brings us to other business and reports. I do have an appointment. It's actually a reappointment of Shawna Brower for the police and the police pension fund, excuse me. Shawna was currently a board member, and she would like to continue offering her services and volunteering her time. I received a lot of positive feedback on her level of productivity, enthusiasm, and effectiveness with all of this. And so with that, I would like to ask for a motion to approve her reappointment. Thank you, Alderman Sunaika, for the first, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second on the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, Ms. Browers is now reappointed to the police pension fund. Moving on from the appointments, I do not have any proclamations at this time. Is there anything for the city clerk to report?
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Well, then that'll bring us down to city staff reports. And looks like the first item on the city staff report, as I share on this side, is the community items of interest. And for that, I'll defer to manager Crumstock.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we want to mention, the first item was last week, we did have a blood drive here at City Hall, and that happened on October 22. We appreciate everybody who donated. We are working with Vitalant for another one on Thursday, December 23. Again, there is a great need for blood donations, specifically because a lot of the schools that used to do it for them, high schools and some other other locations are not doing that now. So again, the next one that the city will be working with Vitalant will be Thursday, December 23. As a follow-up, as what we've been doing throughout the months since Census 2020 actually started, we do want to mention the final numbers that are on the listing as of October 16, when they did close down the U.S. Census Bureau counting. For Rolling Meadows, we had an 80.3% state of Illinois was 71.4, and Cook County had a 67.4. Obviously, what Mayor Gallo did mention before, it is very important for election 2020 to make your vote count by mail during early voting or on Tuesday, November 3. And again, that's seven days from here. So again, they have made it very easy voting by mail. If you've asked for it, it does need to be, in the state of Illinois, it does need to be postmarked by November 3. But again, there are drop-off boxes that you can put your mail vote into. And again, they're early voting locations. They do have Saturday and Sunday hours. And the final is at election day for your voting polling place. And the hours of Tuesday, November 3 are from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on that Tuesday. If you have any questions for voting or obtaining a ballot or anything else that you might have any questions, please contact cookcountyclerk.com or call the clerk's office at 312-603-0906. We do want to mention that there are actually two Cook County GIS websites that residents and even businesses, if you're interested, looking for additional information. If you're looking for election season now, if you're looking for that official ballot drop box locations, the website is on the page that we have, and it's www.cookcountyclerk.com/services/mail-balance-drop-box-locations. The other thing is, if you are doing early voting, there is a website that is set up for wait times for Cook County. It's supposedly updated about every 20 minutes as you go through that. That early voting location website, if you're looking for the wait times, is www.cookcountyclerk.com/early-voting-wait-time-viewer. Obviously, Mayor Gallo did mention that Saturday, October 31, is Halloween trick-or-treat hour throughout the area. Our hours are from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And again, we will have our usual dumpster disposal area over here. If a child collects a treat that you have any concerns about, please deposit it here at City Hall at the candy disposal container that will be here. Obviously, the next day, or if you want to call it Sunday, November 1, is daylight savings time. That does end. It is a good practice to change your batteries in the smoke and carbon monoxide detectors when changing the time on your clocks, unless you have the long battery life of 10 years or so. The other thing that we do want to mention is that November 2, that's the Monday, early refuse set out begins. So you can place your refuse at the curb no earlier than 3:00 p.m. the day prior to pickup. And then obviously, now that we're getting into November, City Hall and Public Works offices will be closed on Wednesday, November 11 in recognition of Veterans Day. Please remember and thank a veteran. And then regular refuse rides will be observed, meaning that there is no delay in services for this holiday. And then we do want to mention that the Rolling Meadows Police Department in Will Creek will be conducting a mobile food pantry event on Friday, November 13, from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the gazebo area just outside of East Park Apartments located at 2270 Algonquin Road. They do ask for this time, so you please pre-register by texting the word FOOD or CAMINDA at 224-427-344. And again, this mobile food pantry event is set for Friday, November 13, between 4:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. It's a little bit different from the ones that they were doing during the summer. We also want to make sure that people know the week of November 23 is the final week for yard waste collection. Yard waste collection ends on Saturday, November 28. The city and the Rolling Meadows have again partnered with the United States Marine Corps Reserve to collect toys for children in need through the Marine Toys for Tots program. Residents may deliver new unwrapped toys to drop boxes at City Hall, 3600 Kirchhoff Road, or the Rolling Meadows Library at 3110 Martin Lane. Toy donations will be accepted from November through December 4. And then, as we've mentioned before, the Illinois State Secretary of State has implemented new policies to allow drivers to stay safe and well and avoid long lines and crowds at the DMV. Drivers aged 75 years and older will automatically have their driver's license extended by one year. The new expiration date is their birthday and 2021. All other licenses and Illinois IDs have been extended to February 1. Vehicle registrations will expire November 1, can be renewed online along with duplicate licenses and ID requests. Plate replacements and for additional informations, please visit www.cyberdriveillinois.com. We do want to remind people with leaves falling, just be friendly to your neighbors. Do not dump or blow them into the street or down the sewers. We do have the street sweepers working throughout the area. And then we do want to mention to people, visit the new Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website. Start by going to the city's website at www.citirm.org and click on the RM Business Buzz link. The RM Business Buzz is an economic development initiative funded and managed by the city of Rolling Meadows, and we proudly support all our local businesses. And regarding that, also mentioned what the mayor said, it's very important that you please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows. It's more important than ever, especially now that for at least 14 days, there will be no indoor seating with the eating. During these times, it is significant to remember our big boxes, restaurants, and small businesses. And then if you have not seen the October electronic news and views or any news and views, please visit www.citirm.org, click on the News and Views tab. This is a sister publication to the printed newsletter. Some of the October topics include the November election information, April 2021 election filing deadlines, a new restaurant preview, and responding to FOIA requests. Obviously, this is the last meeting of the month. We do want to mention for November, for committee meetings, for the main two other committees, Economic Development Committee will not be meeting. There will be no regular scheduled meeting for November, but we do ask people to remember to vote on that day. but we do, I ask people to remember to vote on that day. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on Wednesday, November eighteenth, at seven-thirty PM. And again, that's a little different from their usual date, but it's Wednesday, November eighteenth, at seven-thirty PM. There's tentatively a special meeting, and there is one item for hearing scheduled, and that pertains to the special use to allow a video gaming cafe with variations for screening of refuse containers at twenty-one sixty-four Plum Grove Road. It's in our C two General Commercial Services District. Charity Jones of Alarillo Hospitality is the petitioner. With that, those are items of interest for this meeting.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. I'll keep this going by offering a recap of the new businesses from September of this year.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You have four before you. Three of them were home occupation, and one is obviously on sixteen-hundred Gulf Roads, we, twelve sixty-four. We do always appreciate all new businesses as they continue opening during this economic time and during these downturn times, too.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you. Moving on to the next and third item on the city staff reports, it looks like it's Meacham Road update. For this, I believe, Joellen, Ms. Charlton, are you going to be taking over this conversation?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. I am stepping in for Director Rob Horn tonight in his absence to update the report that he prepared for your agenda. And again, this is just an update for you on the Meacham Road proposed improvements by the state and what the city's role. I know we've had some conversations in the past. I'm not exactly sure where the council's knowledge level is at this point, but sometime midsummer, we learned from IDOT that they would be open to discussing participation in future roadway improvements. And again, with the goal being to propose something other than just the straight resurfacing of the existing two-lane road system. Our neighboring communities and Rolling Meadows staff have discussed the potential benefits that could result from an expanded project. And so we wanted to talk about that before the state went in and spent a sizable amount of money to the tune of about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to resurface it if there would be any interest in the near term to do something more than just that two-lane cross-section. The state indicated that while they were amenable to those conversations, that they would not move forward on any discussions on that without a jurisdictional transfer being part of the equation, which was something a little bit newer than we had talked about before. So the state basically said, you know, we're happy to entertain that, but we're going to proceed with the public letting. Once we learned that, we did coordinate a conversation again with other village staffs and a conference call with Palatine and Schaumburg and ourselves and Senator Anne Gillespie as kind of a last-ditch effort to persuade them to hold off on that public letting and that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar work. And so we had an opportunity to investigate this just a little bit further. Again, our goal would be to talk about the issues at hand, like the bridge and jurisdictional issues with the bridge, what the public improvement would consist of in terms of improvements, drainage, and other topics. Again, our primary interest in trying to collect all of the data that we've heard council express interest in so that they can make an informed decision before we move forward. So that's where we're at at this point. We did meet with the groups as recently as last week and have started that dialogue and plan to continue that dialogue again, hoping to get answers to some of the questions we know are on the council's minds. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Assistant Director Charlton. We will not have questions. It's not discussionary time in city staff report. But if council members do have questions regarding that, they can always pick them up on matters not on the agenda for this evening. Which brings us now to matters not on the agenda. As we're heading into closed session here for this evening to discuss land sales, there's specific limitations that restrict our conversations to engage solely on price. And so before we enter into closed session, I need to, or I'd like to, collect a general consensus from the council to understand if you're in favor of selling the property for the purpose we've been presented, or if you're not in favor and feel there's a better alternative for the property's use and what is essentially our downtown area. The thing is, there's two directions we can go with the outcome of that. If the majority are in favor of this use, then we'd enter into closed session to discuss the offer and possible counteroffer. But again, conversations in closed session are focused explicitly on price. If the majority of the council are not in favor of this particular use, we do not need to enter into closed session to discuss this particular topic because the issue would now be moot as the offer is essentially rejected by the council. I do want to share that yesterday, last night actually, and followed up today, another potential buyer did reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, who then pointed this potential buyer to the city. I don't have specifics other than knowing what type of business they are and whether or not they reached out to the city. But even if this other buyer doesn't work out, I do feel that there's a better alternative than this current offer we have for this particular location on the corner of Kirchoff and Meadow. So with that, I do want to get this general consensus going now. So if you're in favor of using this land for this opportunity, please raise your hand for this purpose. So that's Alderman Cannon, Alderman Diastis, and Alderman Budmets. Thank you. You can lower them. And if you're opposed to using this property for this purpose, please raise your hand now. That's Alderman Bessesi, Veneziano, Sunoika, and O'Brien. Thank you. Just needed to get that done to determine whether or not we discuss this land sales in closed session, and it looks like we will not be at this time. Are there any other matters not on the agenda this evening? We'll go with Alderman Cannon, then Alderman Diastis if he still wants to. So Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So are we allowed to talk about Meacham Road?
Yeah, if you have questions, you can, you know.
I guess a little bit confused by staff. I mean, we've, you know, a few of us about on the board for a long time have talked about this program for years, and we've all said we didn't, we did not want to take possession of that road. That was a major stumbling block. I'm still completely against taking it over. If the state wants to do what they want to do, my attitude would be let them do what they want to do. But I don't want to take possession of that. We don't have financial resources to handle that road going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. There's definitely no argument to that logic there, right? We'd have to determine what the fundamental value is for taking a jurisdictional transfer. Alderman Diastis.
Um, I was going to say almost the identical thing. Having been on the council for many years, I've heard, I've heard the neighbors who live up and down Meacham. Unless they have changed their minds, they were, they seem to be very happy with a two-lane. We tried to talk three-lane, and they were dead set against it. And like Alderman Cannon said, I really don't think that the city should be taking possession and all the expense of that roadway in the future. I don't think that there is a significant benefit to Meadows. It's just a pass-through to get from Schaumburg up to somewhere in Palatine. So unless there's some kind of specific reason that we should be doing it and committing taxpayer money to that roadway in the future, I'm against it because that's what the people of that area wanted. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters not on the agenda? Okay, if there doesn't seem to be any other matters, then we'll continue with what is essentially going to be closed session. But it's a request now to go into closed session for one item, and it does require a motion and a roll call vote. That item is now for personnel, which is under the five ILCS one twenty slash two C one of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Alderman Diastis, and thank you for the second, Alderman Bessesi. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and none opposed, so we will now enter into closed session. Audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any further action upon returning to open session. So with that, I wish you all a good night, and Seth, happy Halloween, and go to those polls. Good night.